Understanding of reading of the annual plan, there is not a large provision for the how the council will make provision for either accessibility or for disabled people specifically within the annual plan. There are some specific mentions, but but not an awful lot. There was no specific engagement with disabled people in Wellington over the annual plan. Disabled people pay rates and are impacted by the changes that the council makes. And have been shown by government and the WHO to have been disproportionately impacted by the changes by the impact of COVID. I'm quite concerned actually that this would be allowed to have occurred at this time. However, dealing with that on a more positive note, it's really great to see that lifetime design has been referenced within council around the housing upgrades. That's really positive. But I would like to see some targets built into that into that program. Just some general observations. The bus stops, the bus stops are as inaccessible as ever. The curb cuts are as inaccessible as ever and the buildings are as inaccessible as they have ever been. A more concentrated and focused effort around engaging with the AIG would be would be great. Also around cultural wellbeing. There wasn't any reference to disability pride, which would have been fantastic. And also finally, it was a survey that was sent out to the chief executives of all councils. And I'm just wondering what happened to that? So that was essentially my submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And we do have time for a question. I see one from Rebecca, councillor Matthews.
All right, having issues with my mouth today. Thank you, Nick. And I just want to thank you for all of the advocacy that you do. And I personally very much appreciate your advice and prompts to do things. I just, I guess, want to get into a bit further about how we can improve the engagement that we do with disabled people and what suggestions you have for that, how we can do a better job as a council.
I mean, I think there are a couple of things that have have been suggested for a significant period of time. And one is around the hiring of a specific resource within council. And that has been put on the table for a long period of time. But I think also the better use of the existing resource of the AIG would be welcomed at an earlier stage within policy creation.
Thank you, Nick. I'm not sure if we have, we probably have time for a very quick other question, but I don't think we have one. But thank you very much. Those points were actually very clearly made. And I've written some notes. I'm sure some other councillors have noted down those what you've said as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Scott, we are hearing from Scott Russell. Is Scott here?
I'm here.
You are? Well, cool.
I just realised that I was basically a shadow with the lighting when I turned my camera on. Should I begin?
Yes, do begin, please.
Kialda Koto. So this is my first time submitting orally to the council. So thank you for hearing me today. My family and I live in Granada Village. I work as a public servant in the city. And I only have a few points of feedback to provide mostly focus on financial aspects of the annual plan and the proposals around rates for the coming year. So I guess one overarching statement I did want to make before beginning was that I do think that the council's response overall to COVID-19 has been really good. And they've done a very good job in terms of being quick responding in terms of reducing costs for businesses and households where possible. And I acknowledge that you guys have already done quite a good job in terms of reducing the planned rates increases in a really responsive way from what the the long term plans have indicated in last year's budgets. However, I think in my, in my opinion, I think there's more that can be done to try and reduce costs and avoid cost increases, particularly thinking about businesses across Wellington and small businesses in the city. I think there there's a really difficult balance to strike and I don't envy you around leveraging the council's balance sheet to a greater degree and borrowing in the short run against reducing those non-essential services or deferring capital works. This is very tricky, difficult trade offs to help offset offset those initial and immediate costs that businesses are facing today. I think it's good that in the past, the council has managed debt levels so that there was a buffer available below that 175% cap. So I think it's a testament to yourselves and previous councils that the council was actually able had that available. And I think compared to other local government entities around the country, it seems like Wellington's in a better position with respect to that. However, I think where where we end up at 162%, it's clear that there's not a lot of buffer left after 2021. The council is likely to face reduced income over the coming years. And I think how that actually will play out is which obviously creates a bit of a sinking lid problem. And how that's going to play out is pretty unclear still. So if there was a signal, I guess, if my question is if there's a significant earthquake tomorrow or another round of infections later this year or early next year that causes a second public health lockdown, how the council would plan to respond to that and whether you're confident that the financial balance sheet has the necessary sort of room to move on that. So yeah, I guess the the shock to the Wellington City, Wellington City and our economy is pretty significant. It should be properly acknowledged, particularly around trying to preserve as many business and firm structures as possible so that there is that sort of ongoing revenue and economic prosperity that people can can rely on. And the two options that have been presented with respect to rates increases. I once, I guess, what my, the gist of my submission was, is there something in the middle that balances the the lump of the lump of rates increases next year associated with the the lower option versus the more system sort of long run 5.5.1% option?
You've probably got about another minute if you want to allow some time for questions.
Just in particular, I wanted to urge the council to to further consider whether there are non-essential services that can be at least temporarily rolled back to save costs and avoid rates increases in the short run, particularly those that won't harm low welfare, harm the welfare of lower income households. And whether there are options for capital deferrals that the council can consider to to deal with those risks. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone with a question? We've got time for a very quick one. Mayor Foster.
Yeah, thanks very much, Scott. And well done for for first participation in this process. I just wondered, you've asked us to look at cutting back in some areas. Did you have any particular suggestions that you think might be helpful and, you know, stack up?
Unfortunately, I don't have like, I don't have good suggestions for you. I'm not familiar enough with all of the options that are realistic for the council. But I guess it was an encouragement for you to for you to revisit that as a choice.
Okay, no, thank you. We'll take it as soon.
Okay, thanks, Scott. That's been useful. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Moving on to Joe Coghlan. Joe, are you here? Lovely to see you. You have, you know, the drill. You have five minutes, I think. Unless it's 10. Sorry, it's 10.
Oh, good. Okay. Right. Now, look, I do. Well, thank you very much, Mayor and councillors for having me today. Look, I do actually also have a video. I'm not quite sure how that is that somebody got that ready to go?
Oh.
It is not the video. The Garden of Inupia. Let's not worry about the video. Okay, well, look, I'm here to talk to you today about New Zealand Chinese Language Week. I'm assuming you've read the letter that I submitted to the council. Essentially, New Zealand Chinese Language Week is in its fifth year. I'm the chair of the trust. It is a charitable trust. And it was set up really to help encourage awareness and understanding around Chinese language and culture across New Zealand. Obviously, that was to really underpin the huge growth in our relationship. And of course, you know, with China being a key contributor to New Zealand of tourism and exports, including education across the agri sector, just in every way. And I know when I was on the council, we did see that massive growth occurring over the sort of five year period. And now the relationships are 30 billion and two-way trade in China is our biggest trading partner. And yet many of our schools are still not teaching Mandarin. It would be fair to say that still more children are learning French than they are Mandarin. And that's probably something that is going to need to potentially change as we move into the future. And I think during this post-COVID world, there are going to be many, many challenges. And we would like to think that New Zealand Chinese Language Week is a useful and practical way for many businesses and organisations to show support for the very important relationship between our two countries. And I do think it's quite interesting that recently the Chinese ambassador said, you know, when in prosperity, friends know us. And in adversity, we know our friends. And I think also, it was interesting and stuff recently that Professor Peter Gluckman, I said Peter Gluckman and former MFA CEO John Allen said that New Zealand needed to re-energise its relationship with China, as it's still New Zealand's top trading partner, and should use these traditional vehicles for relationship building such as science and culture. And I guess that's where at a practical level, New Zealand Chinese Language Week fits in. So the idea is really just to have a year in the calendar. There's the 20th to the 26th of September, last year in the school term, which focuses on Chinese language and learning. And over the past five years, we've managed to get quite a lot of traction. Last year, there were 300 events across the country. And we reached out to 500 schools and libraries and had a number of events through those as well. We had, you know, we reached about 1.5 million people across the country. And we've had huge sort of growth in interest from business, from schools and from councils really in terms of in terms of what we're trying to do. So it's a popular event on the calendar. The level of interest has grown. We do have an interesting range of events and fun range of events which are engaging people from, you know, highlighting Mandarin superstars across New Zealand to delivering, last year, we partnered with the New Zealand China Year of Tourism and we delivered a useful phrases booklet. We have alumni panel events, stakeholder events and initiatives across New Zealand, you know, through things like tea ceremonies, readings and libraries, dances, I mean, just really anything that highlights Chinese language and culture. And one new, oh, we have a five days, five phrases challenge, which is something that we like to put out to mayors and CEOs and leaders across the country, really just giving people the chance to, a little bit like the ice challenge, you know, putting it out there, come on next year and five new phrases. And last year, we came up with the inaugural Dumpling Day, National Dumpling Day, where we had quite a lot of interest across the country, in particular from the AM Show, when we really just, you know, want to encourage people to have a little bit of a focus on, you know, on something Chinese for that day in in terms of food and come to us with their best dumpling recipes. I don't know. Look, we're just constantly thinking of new ideas and assets for the trust to get more people engaged and involved. The reason we're reaching out to councils across New Zealand is because we really do, if if New Zealand wants to have an event like this, it needs to be on a sustainable financial footing. We obviously feel there's a great synergy with councils on the back of sister city relationships, on the back of the Mural Forum, on the back of many delegations that have been going from New Zealand to China and the other way over the many years. And we really like to be able to partner on a more formal basis with local government. So our pitch to you is come on board with us. If we could have a liaison person from every council across the country, that would be amazing. Get to as many schools and to as many, you know, libraries as we possibly can and public places, that would be fantastic. So love to take any questions that you may have and really just hear your feedback.
Thank you, Joe. Very interesting. Now, we do have some questions. So we have councillor Foon. I think I saw councillor Day. And yeah, so we'll start with those two. Councillor Foon.
Kia ora, Joe. Good to see you. And thank you for, this is an amazing mahi and initiative. My understanding is that Wellington would do a lot to support its relationship with the Chinese by getting on with the garden. How do you see that this fits into this work? And what was your position on that while you were in council?
Oh, goodness me. Well, I think that's quite a separate issue to New Zealand Chinese Language Week. So I probably want to park that to the side for this particular conversation because we've only got a very limited amount of time. Back in the day, I was supportive of the garden. But, you know, time has moved on and it's a number of years now since I've been on the council. So I'm not entirely sure where that's sitting right now. But yep.
Right. Thank you, Joe. I'd be keen to talk to you more about Chinese Language Week, being Chinese myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, councillor Foon. And moving on to councillor Day.
Ni hao. It's wonderful to have you here talking to us about this this morning. I just wondered if you have had much interaction with council at the stage about 20th Language Week and what what support has been provided so far? Because obviously you've had a few years under your belt.
Yep. So this is the first year that we've gone out and asked for a financial contribution. We've had excellent support in terms of in effect, I would have shown you that on the video. So unfortunately, I'm not sure why that's not there, but I'll send you through the link anyway. We've had many mayors across New Zealand be very supportive in in principle, you know, they've done the five days, five phrases challenge. We've had the Prime Minister of the Day every year do the challenge, leader of the opposition. Obviously, the the video is a little bit outdated now from last year. There have been a few changes. But yeah, so really good support and principle. And it's just really a matter of trying to work out with local government, you know, what is a sustainable way of doing this? And how can we sort of get it in? I mean, it is on the calendar. It is embraced by many, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's, you know, it does need to be funded in one way, shape or form. So absolutely very good support and principle in in engagement, actually. And I think a lot of the mayors have had a lot of fun doing the five days, five phrases challenge. And Justin himself, actually, last year was very supportive.
So thank you. We've got one more question, I think, from councillor Sparrow.
Hello, Joe. No, my question has now been answered. Thank you.
Oh, okay. That's lovely. Well, thank you, Joe. That was really interesting and inspiring. And I've taken notes. I'm sure some other councillors got some good stuff out of that. So we'll do what we, sure we'll do what we can. Yeah. And thank you again for your submission.
Great. So just, Sarah, just to who shall I, we follow up with in terms of process?
Oh, goodness me. Can you send? I actually can't answer that right off the top of my head.
Probably, yeah, probably Tom, Tom Wan, the International Department, and also the Events Team, David Daniella.
Right, thanks.
Yeah. And if I, I'll confirm with an email.
The other one, I think, Sarah, will be Grants.
Yes, I was thinking that. And always our libraries. I know they are very good at putting on, you know, helping out with these various cultural weeks.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Thank you very much. Right, we have, I would like to welcome Stephen King. And I think he's bringing a submission from Marlon Drake from Living Wage, Wellington. Do we have either Stephen or Marlon here? Stephen, welcome. And you have 10 minutes.
I'll try and keep to it, but start. So you wave your hand if I'm going long.
I'll let you know when there's a minute to go.
I am here on behalf of Living Wage, Wellington, and I'm on the committee of that. As by way of introduction to councillors who might be familiar with the movement, the Living Wage movement is a global community-based advocacy that advocates for a living wage for the lowest paid workers in our society. And it's made up globally of sort of three streams of people. There are these, the union movement, there are community-based groups and there are faith-based groups. And I'm one of the faith-based ones, funnily enough, on the committee. And so, given the notice we had, I'm also presenting to you our verbal, our oral presentation and support of our written submissions. So thank you for taking the time to hear that. First up, we would, as the movement, would like to thank the council for the leadership that it has shown in this area and its national leadership. You were the first, I seem to recall. And it is a significant commitment. And we recognise that. And it just is another reason for us to be proud of our city. It's also, I think, a particularly important value for the council to continue to support in this time when we are looking to rebuild. What's it? That's our new thing, right? We're rebuilding our economy. And that's because we know that the lowest paid members of our society, they spend more of their money locally. So we know that. And the living wage is exactly, does that, it supports the lowest paid workers in our, in our society to fully participate in society. And again, it's an aspirational goal. It is, and it's more an ethical argument, I think, than it is a a financial one. And it interests me often how many companies that I come across in this movement would crawl over broken glass to proclaim and protect their supply chain, their global supply chain, yet when it comes to paying their local workers the living wage, they seem to struggle with the reality of that. And so I just think that's where it sits. And I, again, I congratulate my council for their leadership and their support of this value. And so where do we go from here? Again, you'll see from our written submission. Thank you that you continue to pay your staff the living wage and also the staff in council-owned organisations or council-controlled organisations. There are some areas where we can expand the influence and the leadership that our city has in this. And that is in in significantly in our procurement area and projects where we can begin to articulate the value as a council, as a city that we have, that our workers should be paid, people who work in our city should be paid a living wage. And again, we're stating an aspirational goal. It's in the same way that I would suggest that we would state goals around sustainability and fear practice or those kinds of things. That's the, that's where that lives when we, when I think, when I'm talking to people about why they would want to take that on. Good businesses do that. And also our leadership as council and as a city, it supports, it supports the large number of our iconic small businesses that have made that decision that in their business model and the co-part of how they choose to engage with our city, that they will pay their workers a living wage. And some of those companies are iconic companies like Karma Cola and Garage Project. And so it's not, and as well as that, our city is also, through its, our city's also blessed because we have some of those large financial institutions in the city that have adopted living wage status. So we have ANZ, AMP Capital, Westpac, ASB and Genesis. And all those companies have seen the value in adopting living wage as as a standard for them. We would like to continue to work with the council as as much as we can to support you in your efforts to expand the influence for good that you have. And how we do that, well, we are part of a global network and there are many other jurisdictions, municipalities across the planet who are actively and have actively implemented the living wage provisions within the procurement processes, within the projects that they, the civil projects that they engage with. And we would be delighted if we could enter dialogue with you and be able to bring some of that information. So I'm sure that you're aware that central government is also looking at its procurement processes, is how that vast spend that our local government and central government organisations have within the economy, how that you can sort of get a a two-for-one benefit, there can be a social return as well as the physical return, a material return by using procurement as a lever for for a broader social good. So really, we just, as a movement, wanted to say thank you mainly, but to encourage you to continue your advocacy for the people that this, that the living wage supports. And again, just to highlight to you that the, your support of the ongoing support of the living wage is is more than a balance sheet. It's more than it's more than just how, it's more than just wages. It's not, it's not, it's more than that. We are supporting communities. We're supporting the kids and the families that are part, you know, who go to school with our grandbabies, who go to school with our children. Those are the people that are actually supporting. So I don't want to take too much more of your time. I'm sure you're even more zoomed out than I am. And hopefully, next time I see you, you will be in 3D. That would be better. We come to pack the room when you do the vote. That will be exciting.
Thank you for that, Stephen. And it's good that you did leave some time because I see councillor Matthews has a question.
Kia ora, Stephen. And I just want to congratulate you on the excellent branding for your, for your Zoom presentation. Great to see that Living Wage banner behind you. And I just, I guess, wanted to ask if you've got any, obviously, as the portfolio holder, I'm very keen to work with you on on these suggestions. If you've got any ideas about either in the procurement space or in the project space about things that we could look look at incorporating and promoting the living wage through.
I mean, I think I've also been involved in some very initial discussions at a national level with MB is there beginning to look at those guidelines. And I, what I think primarily what central government has been doing is they've been looking at how other jurisdictions globally in Australasia and what have managed some sort of, I suppose, I want to call it affirmative action type levers through their procurement processes. And and again, there's a whole range, there's a, there's a whole range of how hard people choose to go at that. And so really, I think I wouldn't make the suggestion, I wouldn't make any specific suggestions, but what I would like, you know, it would be good for us if we could get there and actually start, show you some of the information that we're able to retrieve from across the planet. And, you know, we can begin to see what fits best and feels right for our city because it's, you know, everyone's different, you know?
Okay. I don't want to cut you short, Stephen, but it's actually a couple more questions. So councillor Rush, I'm going to take you first because councillor Foon has had a chance to have a question, but I've seen you as well.
Thank you. Stephen, I don't know if you're father or reverend. Stephen, I have considerable problems with the living rage because I I'd like to know who determines what is the right level of of wages? Is it the employer or the employee or a combination of both the or someone else?
Right. Okay. So the living wage, the living wage is a an aspirational target. And the number itself is a national average that's, Sean, I can send you all the stuff if you've got hours to read it. But basically, what they do is they take a mythical target family, as you do when you're doing it on a social research. And you say the family that we're calculating this on is two working parents with one and a half full-time jobs, two teenagers under the age of X. And they go out and they, it's all calculated off publicly available data sets. So for instance,
Could I just stop you there, Stephen, just for 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 time? So we used to have the family benefit when I was a kid. And that was what what was used to top up. My concern about the living wage is that what we're trying to do, which are great aspirational targets, is actually take people who are unable to afford their day-to-day necessities and to pay them a certain amount. And ultimately, that will result in those very goods and services they need being inflated to a point that they cannot afford them anymore.
Councillor Rush.
Could you please maybe address that?
I think we haven't got time to go into all of that, but I think that
We should have a coffee.
That'd be great.
I'm happy to catch up. I bet there's still a beer now that we can do that.
I absolutely think that's the way to go. And the information that you, that you offered would be probably useful as well. And councillor Foon, if you've got a very quick question, we have roughly less than a minute left. But if you've got a very quick question, please go.
Stephen, actually, it's not a question, but it's just to let you know that we are reviewing, it's one of our priorities to review our procurement policy. And we would invite you to engage on that with us later this year. And the council have made a commitment to social and environmental positive impact through procurement. positive impact through procurement. So we're in a good space to address the living wage as part of that.
That's fantastic.
Okay. That, that wraps that up very nicely. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, councillors. I'll send you an email soon. We'll catch up.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Nick Hogan from Cricket Wellington. Welcome, Nick. And you have 10 minutes.
Cool. Thank you. Oh, thank you for the time today, obviously, to, to speak to Cricket Wellington's submission. First off, just like to thank the council for their, their work over the past 12 months, specifically around the Alex Moore Sport Hub, which is obviously well underway now after a few delays. The work that's already been done around COVID relief in terms of rent reliefs for all parties that have buildings or rent on council grounds, and also the number of upgrades and repairs that were done to our sports fields over the past 12 months. Really quickly today, just to sort of back up our written submission, since that written submission was filed, we have taken the steps to remove all affiliation costs to our clubs this year, which will hopefully remove any barriers to play, obviously, after the, what has been a stressful eight weeks for most people. And we're hoping that sport can play a huge part in helping our community get back to some normality. So by removing fees to our clubs, we're hoping to remove barriers for, obviously, participants. To, sorry. This will allow our clubs to focus on, on their running costs rather than paying us. Obviously, ground fees. Currently, we spend overall around 140,000 on ground fees across the four councils. About 64,500 dollars worth of that is to Wellington Council. So obviously, this will, these will still need to be paid. And, but we're not expecting our clubs who normally affiliation fees cost will cover around 60% of those, or 60% of the affiliation fees cover ground costs. Again, just like to thank the council for all their support. And obviously, our main submission today and with our written one is just to ask the council where possible to not raise fees. And if there is anything they can do to, to help this process over the next 12 months, that would be great.
Thank you, Nick. That was very succinct and clear message. Thank you for that. Do we have any questions from councillor Day?
Kia ora, Nick. Thank you for sharing that with us. I'm just wondering what the waiving of the affiliation fees, what sort of proportions that is for a club and how that will improve opportunities for the players? I guess it means their membership fees to their club will be reduced. What sort of, what sort of impacts will that have? It's helpful for us to know so that, you know, when we're looking at the other support, knowing what people are paying to participate.
Yeah, sure. Like, so a, a club does have a major sort of cost, cost to pay us normally. By removing this cost, we've already seen through engagement with some of our clubs that they won't be charging their players anything this year. Others will use, will charge them similar amounts, but invest that money into more of coaching or advertisement to get, to get more players or, and also to focus on obviously their own overhead costs, which to some clubs can be quite large depending on where they're at.
That's really helpful. And thank you for, for looking out for people's wellbeing and health in that way. Appreciate this.
All right. There are no other questions. I think we'll thank Nick. And certainly very clear. And I think we've all got the point. And thank you for coming. It's really good. Thank you. You're welcome to stay and observe too, if you would like. So moving on, we have Tim Jones speaking as an individual. Tim, you have, welcome. And you have five minutes.
Kia ora, Sarah. Kia ora, Kato. And thanks for the opportunity to submit. So in broad terms, I think the council has taken the right approach in this annual plan. Rather than making cuts that will harm the fabric of the city, the council's chosen to try to maintain its service levels and take steps to build back better. Wellington had a lot of issues to deal with even before COVID-19 came along, including its failing water and sewage systems, the central library, and the need to both prepare for the effects of climate change and sharply reduce emissions over the next 10 years. On top of that, we now have both the need and the opportunity to build back better, to co-create a city that's more just for its residents and that lives within its environmental limits. Therefore, as a rate payer myself, I support the proposed 5.1% rate increase, which will enable the necessary work to go ahead without leading to a disproportionately higher rates burden in future years. Tipu Toru Build Back Better. I strongly support the measures proposed in the Tipu Toru Build Back Better section of the annual plan. While each individual measure is relatively modest, together, they're an important early step towards setting Wellington on the path towards a circular economy, but that will help strengthen our community, make our city more equitable for all its residents, and ensure that Wellington lives within local planetary and ecological limits. Now, I support all the measures there. I just want to highlight three of them. As a pedestrian, I'm keen to see those proposed walking improvements, not just investigated, but made. Wellington still has a lot of work to do to ensure that footpaths are safe and well provided for people on foot and using low speed mobility devices, while users of bikes, e-bikes and e-scooters are provided with safe, separated cycleways. Helping to ensure that people live in warm, dry houses will help ease chronic health problems that disproportionately affect poorer Wellingtonians. And a resource recovery centre is an important step towards reducing Wellington's waste stream. Now, these measures are a really good start, but much needs to be done in subsequent plans to build on these early steps. I want to see the investigations and demonstration projects included in this annual plan become actual projects. I'd like to see steps to improve representation of mana fenua and tangata fenua in Wellington's decision-making processes. And as we move towards a long-term plan, considering the long-term plan, I want to see council take urgent, comprehensive action to implement its Teata Korda first to zero greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan. Now, that plan calls for emissions reduction to be front-loaded between now and 2030. So as a city, we need to get cracking. And I should just finally add that I agree with both holding the majority of fees and charges at current levels for 202021, but also that we do need to increase the southern landfill fees to reduce waste going to landfill. So overall, I think council's done a good job putting this annual plan together in very difficult circumstances. I'm especially pleased to see these first shoots of a green approach to post-COVID recovery.
Thank you, Tom. Now, do we have some questions? Yes, councillor Rush, I see. And councillor Penet.
Tim, what's your biggest concern about climate change in the next 15, 20 years?
My biggest concern about climate change in the next 15 to 20 years is that in the context of the city, is that we won't take the necessary steps fast enough to either reduce our emissions or prepare for the changes that we know are already on the way.
What changes? Can you tell me what changes is what I'm looking for? What are the changes? What changes are you talking about? Are we going to get more rain? Are we going to get windier? Are we going to get storms, more lightning? What exactly? Please help me.
On the evidence that's available currently, we're going to have to look out for things, including more severe flooding, more severe storm surges built on the back of the sea level rise that's already occurring. And depending, certainly this will be true of the country as a whole, we're going to need to watch out increasingly for fires in summer. They're just, they're just a number of the effects. There'll also be the economic effects caused, for instance, by climate changes, impacts on our food production system.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we've run out of time for councillor Penet's question, but we will move, we will, thank you very much, Tom. I think that was very useful. It was nice to hear you were so positive. And, you know, good debate there with some of the questions as well. Thank you. So we'll move on. We are actually running a tad ahead of time, but I'm a little nervous that we won't, we'll need that. So I'm moving on to Chris. Is Chris here? Chris Parkin.
Through you, Madam Chair, Chris will be ready at 10:20. We could go with Barbara, who's the next speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Barbara. Welcome. And you have five minutes to talk to us. Do you want to turn, you don't have to, but do you want to turn your video on? You're very welcome to leave it off if you prefer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. There we go.
Okay.
Good morning. What I wanted to do was to address my comments to the achievement of the aims of the cycling strategy, the master plan. I wanted to thank council for their response to my original submission, which was about taking back some of the streets for cycling in the post-COVID-19 situation. Other cities have done it, and I mentioned this in my submission. But I have really welcomed the, the proposed traffic resolutions, COVID-19 projects on Featherstone, Victoria and Hunter Streets. It's a great start. I, I've looked at the strategy and my, my comments are going to respond to, because you've addressed my original submission, I want to now address the long-term achievement of the cycling strategy and get ideas to get Wellington moving. I think the strategy's good. I think the partnerships in place are likely to achieve your, your outcomes, but it's way too slow. The approach that I can see you taking is a project-by-project infrastructure investment approach. And yes, it will address the key barrier, which is to get more people cycling and to encourage people who may not be, who may be afraid of riding on the road to cycle more. But there are so much, there's so much more that you can do apart from infrastructure investment. And not all of it, it costs money. So what I'm talking about is things like making way for cycling on roads, things like more bike parking and storage, encouraging building owners and shops to get involved, bike carriage on buses, bike racks. I've used these before in my home country, Australia. Park and ride on the CBD perimeter, which yes, is an infrastructure investment, but it changed, has the potential as a, as a key, a step change for the city to encouraging, to encouraging. What I'm trying to say is a park and ride on the perimeter of the city that integrates with public transport and bike lanes encourages lots of users into the CBD. What I'm suggesting is an integrated CBD active transport strategy that involves all stakeholders and that in, people who don't cycle, like building owners, shop owners, pedestrians, it's a, it's a step change approach. It's a conversation that informs actions and investments. And not all of those investments are going to be council investments. It's a partnership approach. It extends the one that you already have in place with your two other key partners to all of lots of stakeholders in the CBD. As it stands, and I've been cycling in Wellington now for three years, as it stands, the city is really only built for cars and pedestrians. And as a rate payer, the actions that I would like to see is to change the culture of the city, that the city uses, the car drivers, the pedestrians, the cyclists, the building owners and retailers, to welcome cyclists of all abilities and into the CBD so that everybody understands why. This, it's about culture. Council is the only organisation that can take this lead. And by 2020, I would have expected you to be a bit further along. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, Barbara, that's a challenge, isn't it? And a good one. Do we have any questions for Barbara? I, I guess I do in a way. So I think what you're suggesting is that you're, we're building a cycling ecosystem, not just the infrastructure. How, I'm interested in the park and ride. What do you envisage in the way, where would they be? Sort of, how many would you need? And would they just be specifically targeted for people who might leave cars and.
Okay, so.
By active modes?
Yep. That's, I think, the biggest suggestion that I've made. That is a cultural change about the way transport and active transport integrates across the city. Your partner, the regional council that delivers bus services could, needs to be involved. I don't know where the park and ride centres or stations need to be. But it's on the fringe, it's edge, it's ride hub supported by more frequent, smaller-sized trolley buses in the CBD with the cross-city and the longer, longer trip buses being a different size. So it's about, it's a nuanced approach. It's talking about public transport integrating with active transport.
Okay. Iona, just time for one more.
Thank you so much, Barbara. You're aware that we've pulled a paper tomorrow around cycle lanes. What would your message to council be on that particular issue?
I don't know the paper. Is it cycle, is it on-road cycle lane?
It's the innovating streets one to respond to COVID.
Oh, I've responded. Yes, I think my message to council is riders of all abilities need to be welcoming into the city. On-road cycle lanes is one level of ability. Behavioral change is the biggest challenge for council. So things like a weekly council-sponsored ride group that demonstrates to, to car drivers, pedestrians and cyclists of all ability that they are welcoming the city would be a great first step.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So I think we're moving on to, or back to Chris. Welcome, Chris. I presume you're just looking on my screen. Hello, welcome. You have five minutes and we're looking forward to hearing what you've got to say. Chris, you might need to be unmuted.
How's that?
That's better. Thank you.
They, they should have a special age bracket for the un-zoomed. Anyway, hey, I'll get on with it. Thanks for your time this morning. I know you have a lot to consider. And I'd have to say though, this is probably the only submission you'll receive, which actually has a financial benefit to rate payers. So you'll be pleased to hear that. I refer specifically to your proposals on page 13 of the draft plan, the COVID-19 pandemic response rates postponement. In my opinion, your proposal focuses on the wrong issue. It seeks only to mitigate financial hardship for commercial rate payers when it could be a tool for growth in the local economy. The proposal, by allowing a rates deferral and then requiring it to be repaid almost as soon as you've granted it, will achieve nothing long-lasting for the Wellington economy. My proposal asks you to adopt a policy which clearly focuses on the longer-term health of the Wellington economy. It asks you to defer rates now in the difficult times and collect them when conditions improve. I propose that you allow commercial rate payers to defer all of their 2021 rates simply on request. Interest should be charged on any deferral at market rates of interest plus 1%. That's important. Setting the rate at this level above what rate payers can normally borrow from their banks will ensure that rate payers who don't need to defer won't bother. This avoids the council's need to means test this policy at all and reduces the amount of administration involved. This avoids the council's need to means test this policy at all and reduces the amount of administration involved. Setting the interest rate at this level also benefits rate payers because council's cost of borrowing, which it will need to do to fund this rates deferral, is close to zero percent. Bearing in mind that this rate will probably be around four percent, that's a four percent margin that can be passed back to other rate payers for their general benefit. The third aspect of it, which is really important, is repayment over a long period of time. And I'm advocating that repayment should be by way of a targeted rate over a period of at least five and up to 10 years. This is to ensure that the benefits of the scheme are not squandered by early repayment. If I can anticipate some of your questions, the first would be, how can we be sure that this money is used to directly help tenants and small businesses? The answer is you can't, but in all likelihood, the majority of this funding, where it is actually used by commercial rate payers, will be used to spend in the Wellington economy, be it repairs and maintenance, deferred capital expenditure, or simply assisting retail tenants with their businesses over the time when they can't afford to pay rent. The second question you will have is, won't it cost council a lot to do this? The amount of money could well be significant in the many millions of dollars, but the cost to council will actually be negative. As I've explained, the higher rate of interest that you charge compared to the borrowing that you need to do to fund this scheme will ensure that all rate payers benefit. The scheme will actually generate income for council rather than cost council.
Chris, if you want to allow time for one question, you might have to, we've got one minute left, whether for questions or finishing.
Okay. Well, I'll just make a couple of other points. It's, it sounds a bit like loaning to money to rate payers, but it isn't in one very important respect. And that is that because it's a rates deferral, your security is unimpaired. Rates rank ahead of any other security on a property, including bank-first mortgages. So you will always be repaid regardless of whether the tenant changes, I mean, the owner changes or the owner suffers any financial hardship. Anyway, this is a great policy. It costs you nothing. You make money on it. You'd be mad not to do it.
Thank you, Chris. I think we probably have run out of time for questions, but that's very interesting. And we've also got it in writing too. So we can, we can totally consider at length what you've brought to us. So thank you again. Thank you. We'll move on to Colin Stone from Sport New Zealand. Colin, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, you are. Yes, we can, and we can see you as well. So you have 10 minutes. And if you like, I'll just tell you when you've got a minute left.
Yeah, sure. My, my, my verbal submission is relatively short. Look, firstly, thanks for the opportunity. Just to introduce myself, my name's Colin Stone. I'm the Regional Partnership Manager for the Central and Lower North Island for Sport New Zealand. So obviously here I'm representing Sport New Zealand, which is the crown entity for play, active recreation and sport. You will have received two submissions from Sport New Zealand, ones from our chief executive, Peter Misskiman, and a companion piece and sort of follow-up submission from myself, which is the one I'm basically gonna just talk to a little bit today. Like Wellington City Council, Sport New Zealand has a keen interest in the wellbeing of the Wellington community and the contribution that physical activity makes not only to the health and wellbeing of individuals of FANO, but also to the vibrancy, resilience and connectivity slash social capital that contribute to community wellbeing. Naturally, we are delighted that we now see ourselves returning to play in all its forms, both formal and informal, under alert level one. But we have significant concerns about the impact of COVID nineteen, that it will have lasting effects on our sector. We know that many clubs and in particular the regional organisations who employ staff have been doing it tough during the lockdown period. Lost revenue through lost competitions and tournaments, class four gaming, reduced subscriptions and affiliation fees, and just a general lack of activity have all taken their toll. And it's too early to tell at this stage if the adjusted physical activity leasures, sorry, physical activity and leisure patterns created by COVID will return, or whether participants will return to pre-COVID levels of activity through club-based sport. Likewise, the predictions relating to current and growing unemployment will continue to impact family discretionary spending and is likely to have a knock-on effect on participation, particularly for families already under financial stress. So with this in mind, I do want to acknowledge the response that council has taken to COVID in supporting our sector through rent relief at the Social and Recreation Fund and the short-term zero charge for sports organisations on facility and field hire until the end of this month. We also acknowledge and support council view of holding current fees and charges for field and facility hire for the 2020-21 year. This is really appreciated. But we also acknowledge and appreciate that council is under significant financial pressure at this time and that it might be seen as a softer option to reduce services and supporting, it's supporting the broader leisure sector, which includes the provision of play, active recreation and sport to make things financially fit. But at this moment, we really need the critical stakeholders of local government to maintain their investment and that's our sector's contribution towards healthier, happier and more resilient communities. You will note from my submission that Sport New Zealand is committing significant investment into our sector, supported greatly by a successful budget bid. The first stage of this is very much a modified continuation of the current Community Resilience Fund being distributed by our regional partner, Sport Wellington, on our behalf. It is a tactical fund aimed at getting relief money out the door and not bogged down by bureaucracy as quickly as we can to those organisations who need it the most. We are currently shaping up what this reset and rebuild phase, as we've called it, will look like from July onwards. And again, we, it does emphasise the need for council to stand alongside us as we develop this. The next stage, which we've called strengthen and adapt, is about doing things differently. For example, in this region, Sport Wellington are currently exploring a regional shared services model so that some of the basic back office functions such as financial services and HR management can be dealt with through independent high-level expertise to enable regional organisations and clubs to do what they do best and deliver their products and services into communities, perhaps through modified events, competitions and activities that best suit the participant. Through the provision of facilities and access to quality spaces and places, council has a significant role to play in this phase. We recognise that the $265 million investment over four years from government is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to reset the dial and reimagine the future for the provision of play, active recreation and sport. And with this is the essence of the long-term difference and better phase. And we would value council's input and expertise in helping us and the sector to reshape this future. So the essence of my submission is that we're not asking for more, but what we are saying is, please keep on doing what you're doing in the provision and facilitation of play, active recreation and sport opportunities for the people of Wellington. Please keep on investing into the provision of quality spaces and places for communities to recreate and enjoy competition sport. Please keep on investing and mandating the regional leadership role of Sport Wellington and in particular, the regional physical activity strategy, Living Well, which Sport Wellington are the backbone organisation for. Please keep on optimising the magnificent natural environment for play, active recreation and sport that we all enjoy, that helps contribute to a healthy, happy and active, resilient Wellington community. So in short, please keep your foot on the gas and continue to do the great work that this council is recognised for. Thank you.
Okay, Colin, that was very positive and very clear. Do we have questions? No, it looks as if you have made your points very, very clear and thank you very much again.
No problem.
Thank you for your time. You're very welcome to stay and continue to watch the meeting if you, if you choose to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, we'll move on to Phil Gibbons from Sport Wellington. Yes, Sport Wellington. Phil, are you there?
Yes, I am.
So we're having all the sports people. You have 10 minutes as well.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome to start. And if you want to ask, leave time for questions, a minute or two at the end is useful.
I'll certainly be leaving some time for questions. So, tena kota pataka, tena tamihi diakoto. So I'm taking Sport Wellington's submission as being read. However, I'd like to provide some additional comments to our submission. Sport Wellington is an organisation seven years ago. It was an organisation that was largely funded by Sport New Zealand. And our brief was to increase participation across seven targeted sports, full stop. That was kind of the purpose that sat in behind who we were as an organisation. We've had a new strategy approved in March of this year. And I guess we have paused and reoriented the business to support the community even more over the last eight weeks. I want to acknowledge at this point to all of you superb work that your staff, your officials have done in support of the work we've been participating in over that eight-week period. But we're now transitioning ourselves as an organisation back to a new strategy. And that strategy, as I said, was approved in the middle of March, just prior to lockdown. Our purpose for the next 12 years is centred around transforming lives in the Wellington region. Our vision, our order, everyone active, healthy and happy. We're going to achieve it by focusing on three strategic objectives. Less active people are more active, increased quality opportunities for all and better connected in stronger communities. Critical to this is our collaboration with partners and stakeholders, partners such as York Council. How are we going to achieve these strategic objectives? We're going to do this through leadership and advocacy, delivery and partnering. Our strategy thirty-two signals a strong shift towards physical activity. A focus on influencing activity levels of people who are less active, further positioning the organisation as a regional leader and raising the visibility of biculturalism and the work in which we do. Success for our communities in the region relies on a combined ability to work collectively towards enabling physical activity, which, as you heard from Colin's presentation, involves play, active recreation, active transport and sport. So you see, it's a major shift away from what this organisation's purpose was seven years ago. Having a shared outcome between us of wanting to have a collective impact on the wellbeing of our communities is a great opportunity for us to play our respective strengths and avoid duplication and avoid competition. I think if anything, the COVID experience has reinforced the need for us to do that. We already have a shared region-wide physical activity strategy and Colin referred to that, Living Well. Its purpose is to achieve greater collective impact on wellbeing outcomes acquired through physical activity. The mechanism for this is an agreed planning framework, which will help identify where and how we can work together at a regional, sub-regional or district, slant, city level. It's an approach that has been endorsed by this council and the other seven councils in the region that features clearly in the first half of our submission. Ultimately, we want to have a conversation with this council and the other seven councils about how we might do things differently, but better, to build better communities in line with our shared purpose through the region-wide Living Well physical activity strategy. That, that concludes my comments. I'm really happy to engage in any questions or conversation that you may choose.
Thank you very much, Phil. I think we do have time for a question. Is there any questions? No, there actually don't seem to be. Oh, yes, we've got one from the mayor.
It's not so much a question, but just to say, Phil, congratulations on the new strategy and the breadth of that about all forms of healthy participation in sport and recreation. I think it's absolutely fantastic. So, well done. And we look forward to working together on delivering that.
Yeah, and just to update the council, so yes, a strategy approved, currently going through a restructure to enable us to be in a position to be able to deliver that strategy. But again, I guess like most of the sector, we are feeling the impact, the direct impact of COVID nineteen. And that will certainly influence the capacity of our organisation over the next six to 12 months.
Thank you again. That has been very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to our last one before morning tea. And I know Dr Layton's been here the whole time and finally you get your chance to speak. You have 10 minutes. And if you like, I will signal when you've got a minute or two left, so you can have some questions if you wish.
Thank you very much. I have been multitasking while we've been on. I do apologise. There's always interesting to hear what everyone else has got to say. So that's quite nice going a little bit towards the break or towards the end. And, and I've been really reflecting on the whole issue of anecdote versus evidence, expert opinion. And I was just thinking at the moment, listening to the last speaker, you know, you're hearing again and again from all these fabulous experts who've got evidence to their fingertips, who've gone away and they've made really, you know, hours of effort, massive amounts of money and expense, if you paid for it as a council, to bring you this information. And yet, you seem to make decisions based on anecdote and personal experience, which is important, but needs to be reflected in what is the evidence. So, you know, I've, of course, I'm coming with my health hat on. You know, and from a personal level, I'd like to think that all of you enjoy feeling well. You like feeling good. You like waking up in the morning and not being tired, not having achy joints, not having to take some insulin for your diabetes, being able to move around quickly because you haven't gained 20 kilos in the last couple of years. And you like your family to feel well and healthy as well. You like to not be worried about them. It's actually quite hard now to think back 10 weeks ago, just how worried we all were about our own health and how worried we were about our children's health and our parents' health and what might happen to us. It's all gone away now. So suddenly we're like, oh, business as usual. Whereas of course, yes, it is, but no, it isn't all at the same time. And even if yes, it is business as usual for us as New Zealanders, we've still got to be making those changes that encourage us, that make us basically continue to be healthy. We do not have the money here in New Zealand while you're busy talking about saving money. If we have a health tsunami of people who are unfit, overweight, bad diets with breast cancer, bowel cancer, arthritis, Alzheimer's, heart disease, strokes rushing into this hospital, we don't have the money to actually fund all of that stuff. And we don't have the money to transport every single car park in the city into a mobility park so that we can make everyone have their cars because suddenly they're too ill to not have them. We need to keep those places for the people who have diseases regardless of their lifestyle. We've done loads of work on this. The Royal College of Physicians did a massive piece of work, supported by the College of Public Health, the College of Surgeons here in New Zealand, all around what actions need to be taken to improve our health. And it's always, it's healthy housing, it's living wage. So Sean, you listened to that, that coffee with the living wage chap. He's got all the evidence to his fingertips. This is not just about personal money and an idea popped out of somebody's head. And it's about FANO wellbeing, about children, the disabled, the elderly and us being able to get around. While sport, going and playing cricket, that's great. Having a game of football, going for a swim. I'd love to think, you know, we want Wellingtonians to be doing that, but actually, the evidence for keeping us active and keeping us healthy because of our activity is active commuting. It's going from work to home, home to work, home to school, home to the shops, by walking, by bike, by scooter, by skateboard, by bus, however you want to do it. And if you've got too much stuff to carry, then you can put it in a taxi and go or a delivery van and get someone else to bring it home for you. That's where the evidence lies. It's not about personal responsibility. But if you want anecdotes, we've got plenty of anecdotes of people wanting to be healthy, wanting to feel better. And they want you to put the resources in to allow them to do it. It's about equity, accessibility, preventing discrimination. It's not about making a city that works for someone like me. It's about making a city that works for people who don't have those resources. And that's your job. It's about making a city that works for people who don't have those resources. And that's your job. And I'm gonna probably stop there. I can talk about COVID if you'd like to, but I know that's not actually part of the annual plan, but I'm happy to ask questions.
Well, thank you very much. Very succinct. And we have got, as a result, quite a bit of time for questions. So where are the questions? Has anyone got questions? We've got councillor Foo and councillor Rush and councillor Pannett.
Dr. Leighton, thank you so much for coming in to speak to us today. Just in regard to the annual plan, what is it that you see we could do effectively and quickly that would enable the active-based commuting? Have we put enough of that into the annual plan in your view?
Well, you've been working on the Let's Get Welly Moving strategy for a long time. We've got a number of strategies, resources, all the stuff you've been doing, ready to go or almost ready to go. You are consulting parking space by parking space, it seems, which is driving a lot of people round the bend. Admittedly, I can drive some people round the bend until it's their parking space you're talking about. But, and I mean, consultation is really important, but we did also consult in an election and we elected you all to make some decisions and to just get on with it, rather than come back to us and ask us our opinion about every single minutiae decision you want to make. I do think, you know, we need to be, we need those processes. The Let's Get Welly Moving was very focused. The consultation was all about, we want people to be able to get around this city without relying on their cars. A little anecdote, I did canvass my team this morning before I came to this meeting. Two thirds of us, it turns out, don't have cars. Who'd have thought? And the one that did says, it's fairly pointless because you can't ever park anywhere. So, you know, people actually can't park anyway because we have too many cars in the city and not enough parking spaces anyway. So why don't we actually tip it over the balance? Tip it so that it actually is easy and quick and nice to get around this city without having to use your personal car, so that people can think, oh, I'll just jump in an Uber. Oh, I'll, you know, grab a taxi to do that. Oh, I'll make sure, you know, we've got the right, the family setup right, the e-bike, whatever else you're going to do to be able to use the infrastructure. But if the infrastructure isn't there, people aren't going to do it. So actually stick to your plans, do the things you've already set out to do and get on and do them. You've got good stuff. I did look at the budget and your revenues and saw just how much money you made from parking. 24% is the largest amount in your revenue. I did think to myself, well, maybe we could make more money from landfill fees because that's user pays. And particularly, I was surprised at how low the commercial landfill was. I was thinking, oh, I might set myself up a business and start dropping landfill off that way instead. So that, you know, people have actually got to pay for the waste that they make in this city. And we don't have a lot of space to be storing our crap at all. We don't have a lot of space to be storing our cars, the loan, all our rubbish. And I've walked up past the southern landfill a couple of weeks ago. It's awful. I mean, the expansion just in the last two or three years is really depressing. That is something you have got to take charge of and get sorted out.
Right. Well, that was so fulsome an answer, but I think we probably only have room for one more. And because councillor Day hasn't asked one, I'm actually going to allow her to have it. I think you haven't asked one, or have you?
I have asked one, but I could just quickly say, Marion, I'd love to speak to you further. And I'm sure other councillors would too. I particularly want to talk to you about children because I know that you will have lots about that.
Okay, in that case, I will allow councillor Rush, and we can be really quick, councillor.
Thank you, Deputy, yeah. Marion, thanks for coming. You raise a very, very interesting point. A balance between personal choice on lifestyle and the role of the state to ensure that those choices do not become a burden on the state. And we see things such as, you know, the fight against smoking, I gave up 20 years ago, alcohol consumption. But then again, we also allow people to play, even in their 50s, rugby with the impact on ACC and so forth. So I'm asking you really, is where is that balance going to strike? Do we force people to ride bikes? Or is there a balance that enables them to have some personal choice about their own mobility?
I think the word force is very difficult. I mean, you look at other countries that have got high rates of cycle uptake, like the Netherlands and Denmark. You know, Denmark's hilly and freezing cold. You know, it's not, everyone goes, oh, the Netherlands is flat, that's why they all do it. They weren't. They were kind of forced in that they built the infrastructure and they stopped the cars from being able to take all the quick routes and sneaky routes and go down every street. And now everyone does it, and people don't feel forced, and they don't feel like they're having their arm twisted to do it. They do it because it's easy, it's safe, it's pleasant, and everybody else does it. So at the moment, it feels like a forced choice, but it won't feel like a forced choice if we make it the norm. If we just go ahead and make it the normal thing that everyone does all the time, people just be like, oh, yeah, that's what I do. And this does still leave room for people who have to have cars, to have cars. But if we constantly talk about the exceptions, what we're doing is diverting the discussion away from what matters for most people. And that's what we need. And actually, your responsibility as leaders is to do some forcing, is to make our lives better by forcing us to do things that might initially seem painful. As I said last time I was on, if I could just sit on my sofa all day and do bugger all and still be well and healthy at the end of it and eat chips, then I would. But I know I can't get away with it, so I don't.
Thanks, thanks, Baron.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a very fulsome and very insightful answers and questions. And I'm sorry, we can't have more, but we have run out of time. So we are a little bit ahead of schedule, but that's because we did stick to the rules for every participant having their allotment. And a couple of participants at least were under time. So we are able to take a little bit more of a break. I'm going to suggest, because people do know when they're meant to be speaking, that we actually do come back at 11:15, but don't be late, please. If you could be here a little bit early. And then we can start properly with Felicity Wong, who's scheduled for us at 11:15. So we will adjourn now. So we have roughly 20 minutes. Thank you, everybody, for your attention, and thank you to our submitters. And Felicity, I'm sorry, but you do get a little bit of an extra bonus of having a break or a cup of tea, and we'll see you at 11:15 properly.
I think that's a really great conversation and probably one that's worth exploring, the more time that we've got now. And councillor Pannett has a question, if you can keep it fairly succinct though.
Thank you Felicity for all the amazing work that you do too. I love working with you on the team. Look, I've been challenged by a couple of my colleagues around Maori history and how we give equity. What do you think about the issue of dealing with some of the more problematic aspects of our colonial past like Edward Gibbon and the statue around the Basin Reserve? Should we keep that? Because I was just looking at what's happening in Virginia at the moment.
Yeah, I think monuments are really controversial at the moment. And I think we've got to tell a story about what, if we keep them, we've got to tell both sides of the story. And I'm really struck by how awful that park in Whanganui is where you've got those weird statues to colonial military figures. But there's a real absence of the story for the victims, if you like, of their colonial activities. Look, I think it's about telling the story, you know, and it's interesting to hear the whole sort of story. I think that's better than kind of erasing the kind of, you know...
Say that it's a really difficult time, you know, for Wellington and for you too, for all you councillors and for your leader, the mayor. I, we absolutely acknowledge that many Wellingtonians in the feedback about the rates questions were very cautious or opposed to any rates rise. And we don't have an opinion on that, but our opinion is that what expenditure you do make has to be really high quality. And I want to talk a little bit about why the Built Heritage Incentive Fund is a really high quality expenditure. Now, um, you know, folk, folk are aware that, you know, the importance of the unique character of heritage to our city, the sense of belonging and our cultural identity and so on. The value for money you get from the Built Heritage Incentive Fund is very high compared to other aspects of expenditure. And the reason for that is the economic rationale of the Built Heritage Incentive Fund is that central and local government require buildings in private ownership to be strengthened and the cost of that is borne by the private owner. On the other hand, the benefit of strengthened and remaining heritage buildings is often borne or enjoyed by the public. So we all walking past heritage buildings, we enjoy them, we love them, it adds to the fabric of our city. And what the Built Heritage Incentive Fund does is kind of recognise that public-private, that the burden is all on the private owner, but the benefit is substantially on the public as well, of course, as on the owner. Because we have plenty of statistics about heritage buildings being loved and used and repurposed and so on. You know, the, the, the greenest buildings we've got are the building, the greenest buildings are the buildings that we've already got. If you look at it from a climate change point of view, in terms of bang for buck, you get a great return for the climate on repurposing and strengthening heritage buildings rather than pulling them down to a pile of concrete and then starting again. It's sustainable for Wellington City Council's annual budget as well. You don't end up owning the, owning the buildings, you don't end up with an ongoing opex responsibility to maintain the buildings. So it's a really, you know, you, you get a much bigger bang for buck by investing in this way in our city. The jobs that are created by strengthening are really high quality jobs. You know, there's skill-based jobs that are useful in all parts of our society for a whole range of infrastructure uses. And, you know, finally, I just make an observation about the low-rise nature of and the, and the speed with which the, the low-rise heritage part of the city actually recovered after COVID. You know, Cuba Street's really buzzing at all times of the day, all through the weekend. And we can't say that about all parts of our city. So that's on the Built Heritage Incentive Fund, we really support the Tipu Toa Build Back Better initiatives. And I would notice in the public feedback on the rates issue that if you combine the strongly agree, the, the most somewhat agree and that don't have any view on the Tipu Toa package of initiatives, including the Built Heritage Investment Fund, Incentive Fund, you get by far a majority of Wellingtonians support this kind of investment. I'd just like to say there's some longer term issues about the timeframe in which building owners have to complete strengthening and, you know, COVID is a bit like a kind of economic earthquake that we've suffered. And I wonder if we, well, I, I, we exhort you to, to engage with central government potentially at some point to expand the timeframe in which strengthening has to happen. Look, I think you've done a really good job on the library, you folk. It's a really, you know, Wellingtonians have spoken and we also support a cost-effective strengthening of that heritage building. We think that Wellington is well placed in a domestic tourism and educational focus to become a kind of like an educational focus for the teaching of Aotearoa New Zealand history, which we'll, all schools will be doing in 2022, I believe. And we can leverage off our government buildings and so on with a really good story about why every student in New Zealand needs to come to Wellington. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, Felicity, because we do have a couple. So I have one from councillor Young and one from councillor Day. Councillor Young.
So hi Felicity, good to see you not in the flesh. I mean, that's not the way, good way to see you, but you know what I mean? So I just wanted to talk about the library because I think you've misunderstood on the library. We have made no decision about the library. We have, but the, the, the paper did report that we had agreed to, to do the strengthening, but that is not the case. We, we've agreed to consult on it basically and speed up the consultation process. So having said that, I was going to ask you what your view on the library is, but then I think you've really answered the question, which is, you think we should strengthen it?
Look, yeah, I, I was very struck by the debate that you had about giving a hundred and twenty thousand to the Basilica in Hill Street. Now, that's a good process, you know, they would love to, to, to base isolate the Basilica and what have you, and that's the longer term plan. But they've managed to refit themselves quite quickly to a more, a more doable kind of project to strengthen it, you know, that's great. And that's the kind of thinking that I think you guys, you know, there's a bit of a space for the council to sort of get into that kind of more flexible responding to COVID way. And that, look, I mean, yeah, we've got a great building. Let's fix it up, let's get that library open and let's think about the bigger projects down the track.
And, and interesting because of, of course, the Basilica is built on rock and also doesn't have decor because it was built before those terrible days. So, you know, really useful to have your views. Thank you. And thank you for all you do in the heritage sector and the many projects with which we have had involvement together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Day.
Kia ora Felicity, thank you for coming today to talk to us. And I just want to say I do agree with your comments around the environmental benefits of, you know, preserving buildings. But I guess one of the challenges, and I was wondering if you would share your perspective of talking about New Zealand history. Obviously it's challenging for us because we don't have heritage, we don't have heritage buildings pre-colonial, yeah, pre-colonial times. But just what, what, what you feel we can do to acknowledge our, our Maori history and, you know, through buildings. And I guess, you know, we invest a lot of money in buildings that represent a colonial heritage, which is part of our country, but is, you know, it provides some challenges for us and what we could do to improve our equity and opportunities for Maori in telling our, our history.
Sure, yeah, I think there's some really interesting archaeological sites around Wellington and I would talk about Terra Fiti headlands, you know, over, sort of beyond, towards Makra. And you've got fantastic sites like that, that have actually a whole story of Maori sites of massive significance, but also entwined with old gold miling sites. And, you know, the Terra Fiti Station has been a fantastic tourism experience when we had cruise ships and so on. So I think you can, you can definitely look at like the whole range of New Zealand, Aotearoa, New Zealand history. Absolutely. I think there's a big opportunity in there.
And I just, I guess Tirol Pa would be another one to look at as being in our central city, it was covered by a building, has been uncovered through a, a building. And, you know, what, what can be done in there and what the community could do to advocate for more awareness and emphasis on that.
I think that's a really great conversation and probably one that's worth exploring, the more time that we've got now. And councillor Pannett has a question, very, if you can keep it fairly succinct though.
Um, thank you Felicity for the amazing work that you do too. I love working with you on the team. Look, I've been challenged by a couple of my colleagues, you know, around Maori history and how we give equity. What do you think about the issue of dealing with some of the more problematic aspects of our colonial past, like Edward Gibbon and a statue around the Basin Reserve? Should we keep that? Because I was just looking at what's happening in Virginia at the moment.
Yeah, I think, you know, monuments are really controversial at, at the moment. And, and I think we've got to tell a story about what, if, if we keep them, we've got to tell both sides of the story. You know, and I'm really struck by how awful that park in Wanganui is, where you've got those weird statues to colonial military figures. But there's a real absence of the story for the victims, if you like, of their colonial activities. Look, I, I think, I think it's about telling the story, you know, and it's, it's interesting to hear, but to hear the whole sort of story. I, I think that's better than kind of erasing the kind of, you know, why we have these statues. It is sort of weird to me that Edward Gibbon would, Wakefield's graves are kind of hidden under the motorway behind the Bolton Hotel. So there's, there are interesting stories, you know, he's an interesting person, you know. But we, we hide that story away at the moment. We don't, we don't actually have, have it all, you know, put all the washing out, the good and the bad.
Thank you, Philistine, and I'm sorry, we don't have more time, it's such an interesting topic, but thank you very much. We need to move on, but thank you. So we will move on now to Bernard. Bernard, are you here? Bernard Ashonasee? Where are we? Is Bernard here? Maybe we'll.
Through you, Madam Chair, Bernard isn't in the Zoom yet. I've given him a call.
That's all right. Do we have, do we have any of the other speakers who were coming after him?
We do, we should have Daniel.
Okay, well, let's move to Daniel. We'll come back when Bernard arrives. So Daniel, very welcome. You have five minutes and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. Just wondering if Daniel's there. Coming in. Hello, Daniel. Might need to just turn your, get unmuted, Daniel, that's.
Very amusingly, the convenient place for me to take this call is in the lobby of Wellington City Council chambers. I'm in the building even if none of you are.
I am.
Okay, well, that's, that's the two of us. Good, good to be in the same building at this point in history, you know, that's a. So intro to me, I am a New Zealand citizen, I have been here for over 12 years. I'm currently a homeowner with a home and rental properties in Highbury. I'm involved in an array of green technology companies, like six green tech companies right now. And one of the founders of the Green Spark Economic Platform, which we spoke with several ministers about implementing and some basics of that platform have been used. Strangely, I'm going to start right on the topic of green things. I read a lot of the city's output and I do not in that output feel that climate crisis is being given enough traction in city communications. It is a desperate topic for this city. Yeah, not this year, maybe next year, maybe forty years. But our entire CBD is going to be, you know, pretty much underwater, might be sixty years, might be a hundred years, don't know. But we all know those simulations, so if we're going to achieve the things to keep Wellington a survivable city, I would love, 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 love to see climate crisis mentioned as climate crisis, those specific words a lot more in a lot of things, including anything mentioned about housing, because it's going to affect housing and riding, because it's going to affect riding. Moving, moving on to riding, I was really grossly offended by the, the comments being pulled for the temporary modifications to the road surfaces to better enable pedestrianism and bicycles as part of the COVID package that happened yesterday. We, I, I'm not sure how council dropped the ball on that, other cities managed to get it together. It's nationally embarrassing for us and it's a lost opportunity and we can't afford to just throw out opportunities these days. As part of my green platform and my pro pedestrianism platform, I advocate strongly and have advocated strongly to this council before that we make, have to make private vehicles less convenient and more costly than public transit. So to this end, we should make non-motorized spaces attractive and available and as a city strive to make everything, and I mean literally everything, people handicapped accessible. One of the things that I run a charity that was originally bringing the World Science Fiction Convention to Wellington this year. We were bringing in over two thousand people internationally. And I had to drive the entire city in a mobility device just to test it for our clientele who are disabled. And I have found a lot of places in the city that just are not up to international stuff for accessibility. And I, my favourite, and this is just a minor digression, are DoubleTree Hotel. It's a lovely hotel with one hundred percent roll-in accessible rooms. Except the elevators aren't accessible, so those hundred percent handicapped accessible rooms are entirely useless. Moving on to housing, in the, yes, expensive Silicon Valley suburb that I came from, we had a lot of laws in place that might do well for our current housing situation. And the key one of those is vast penalties for maintaining empty housing stock. New Zealand, if you've done the numbers, does not have a housing shortage. We have more housing than we have people living in compromised housing, we're sleeping rough. We have many, many thousands of empty houses. We should.
Daniel, sorry, you have one minute left, so you might need to think about what.
I'll get there. Well, gross, we should grossly disincentivise empty housing stocks. Making it so expensive to keep houses empty that it becomes more attractive to rent them for less money. Another simple thing that we can do is fire inspectors going to rental properties once every three or five years to make sure that they are up to fire code. And they can easily add other things to inspect at the same time. I know there are a lot of non-code buildings here. I rented in some of them when I first moved here. Moving on quickly, because I've tried to move on quickly. As we are building so many new buildings, we should have mandated solar on the rooftops. And here's one that is non-intuitive, we should mandate buildings have less parking if we mandate parking situations at all. The more that we make accessibility available for cars, the more cars there will be. So when San Francisco introduced the Moscone Convention Centres back in the early nineties, they did the numbers and they radically, radically under required parking for those structures to make the area just implausible for cars. And sure enough, everybody takes trains and buses to get there because there's a huge.
Daniel, I'm sorry to have to cut you off, but you have come to the end of your time, but thank you, you have made quite a few points very clearly.
I will gladly blather all day.
No, you've made some really good points. I've written down quite a few of them and they were interesting as well, but I'm afraid we have also run out of time for questions. So thank you again for coming. It's been very interesting.
And if any councillors want to contact me directly, my email address is available via the secretary. I am happy to take time out of my day anytime to support you folks with answering questions.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm wondering if Bernard, Bernard is here yet or whether we just need to keep moving on. Are you able to advise on that?
No, he, he's not present in the meeting, so continue with.
Just, just give me a text when he does arrive. So I'm, I'm wondering if Jill is here. Jill Ford. She's down for it now at eleven thirty-five.
I am here.
Thank you, Jill, in your normal wonderful way. Yes, we can. Yeah. Welcome. You have five minutes. And it's the same, the same drill. If you want us to have a bit of time for questions, you need to make sure you leave a little bit of time.
Okay, I have a PowerPoint presentation, so good. Right, I'll talk to that. Kia ora kato. Like Daniel, I'm extremely disappointed with the fact that the carb, zero carbon does not come up as a priority anywhere in the annual plan. Next slide, please. To be a sustainable city, there are basically two things we can do. We can reduce our waste and we can reduce emissions from transport. I'm going to start with waste. So on average, you've got approximately fifty percent of a landfill that's full of organic material. Unfortunately, currently Wellington does not recycle or compost its organic material. This is going to cost us a lot more in the long term, cost of a new, extending the landfill, waste levy fees and carbon emissions. So our green food waste is one of the last, largest contributors to our landfill. We put almost twice as much waste in our landfill as Christchurch. Christchurch has had organic composting for the last eleven years, which suggests there might be a connection. Despite the savings, we are planning on spending twenty million on enlarging the landfill. I'm not an expert, but it would occur to me that perhaps if we started composting very rapidly, we might be able to reduce significantly the amount of material going into our landfill and not have to spend the twenty million extending it. Not only that, it will save us an awful lot of methane that gets produced from compost, from organic not being composted. And if we wish to reach zero carbon, then this is one very good step. Secondly, the last point is actually the government waste levy will soon increase from ten dollars per tonne to sixty dollars per tonne. So there's another saving for us. Next slide. The next issue is transport. Sarah will know I'm pretty bloody passionate about this and was very interested in Daniel's comments. We are leaders in car ownership and obesity. I would suggest there is a connection. Our single biggest carbon emissions are from vehicles and these have been increasing significantly. Not only does this have, you know, major health implications, premature deaths, cardiac hospitalisations, it's also recently been shown that air pollution can significantly worsen COVID-19 outbreaks. So it was extremely disappointing when you guys basically rejected all the proposals yesterday. It seems to me that Wellington City Council wants to save parking but not save lives. We, if we really are serious about being a zero-carbon city, we need to act now and not still carry on with let's get Wellington waiting. We've got increased congestion, children can't play on the streets. I live in Newtown. It's just full of car parking, a lot of which aren't even residents. We are short of space for housing, yet a new housing development that's going in my road has proposed two car parks for some of the houses. We need to stop prioritising car parking. This actually disproportionately affects people who are low income because it's actually quite expensive to run a car. And they are also the ones most likely to have health, health, bad health outcomes because of air pollution. Next slide, please. All the consultations that have been going on for goodness knows how many years have all had majority support for safe cycle routes. And on this slide where I've got majority support for safe cycle routes, I'm not quite sure if Donna's up with me. Can you go?
Can I just say, no, she's not, Jill. Donna, can you just move the slides up to where Jill is?
Right, there's my composting. Next one, Donna.
Jill, we just have one more minute too.
Okay, I've only got two more slides. So can you move again, Donna, to slide number eight? Sorry, my mistake for not telling you, I got carried away. Okay, so here's the results from your recent consultation on the innovating streets. As you can see, there is a majority approval for every single one of those routes. Yet you've backtracked and I'm seriously hoping that you again to fast-track actually doing something about this. Next slide, please. Okay, so the likely impacts of climate change are well-known in Wellington. We've just had massive storm surge, which caused a lot of problems on the south coast. That is going to increase. Next slide. We may be, next slide, please, we may be a small town internationally. We may be a small number of people, but every single one of us can make a difference. Climate change is much bigger than COVID-19. A vaccine in two years is not going to cure climate change. This council has to get real with prioritising zero carbon. And there's just two simple ways that I have suggested you could do, and I don't want to be told that you're going to have a pilot scheme in Miramar when there's at least four or five councils in this country that have already done it. Why do we need to keep reinventing the wheel? Any questions?
Well, I'm sorry, Jill, we've run out of time for questions, but I think, I think you've made your case in a very impassioned and compelling way. So thank you again and.
If anybody wants to talk to me, my email is available. They know where to go.
And that was a great presentation. Thank you, Jill. Just moving on to Pail Raritou, and look at me if I haven't said that exactly correctly. Do we have Pail here? No.
Yes.
Oh, you are, good. Excellent. We, that's lovely, lovely to see you. You have five minutes. And if you want to allow a little bit of time for questions, then it has to be fitted into the five minutes, so you need to finish speaking a little bit before then. And I'll let you know when you've got a minute to go.
Perfect, thank you, Sarah. Kia ora, Pail, I submitted in quite a rush and now I'm like, bow to do and I don't like that, but I just wanted to speak to my submission to say things, obviously. With section two, I think, yes, definitely, something I think is really awesome is like maintaining all the services and levels. I'm a regular pool user, I love the pool, really happy, that's why I'm a little bit rushed, I got back from the pool this morning. I think it's really cool that Wellington City Council has so many amazing services. I'm so excited about the library coming back. Please keep all our services, they make our city an amazing place. Section three, the, I'm strongly in support of the one, five point one percent rates rise option. I think we need, we need that money to do stuff, like, that's easy. I like, I know that lots of people will say like, don't put the rates up because, I don't know, spend more money, but actually we need money. And then section three, the Tipu Toa, I'm, I'm like, when I read this, I was like, oh, yes, this is cool. I'm strongly in favour of this. I really, really love the resource recovery centre idea. I'm kind of surprised and shocked that we don't already have something like this, to be honest. Yeah, so strongly in favour of that, not just making a plan for it, but actually making it happen. The other thing I wanted to say on this spin back better thing, I'm an ocean swimmer. I love swimming in the ocean. I had the best summer. We had very warm water temperatures until maybe a couple of months ago and that happened. But it's really sad that there is always problems with our drains. And it's pretty cool, all of us swimmers let each other know now that it's not safe to swim. But it sucks. Can we please invest in our infrastructure and improve the pipes and things? Because I, I like, I love swimming in the harbour and I really want to keep swimming and it's just sad. Yeah, it just makes me really sad that, well, I, I'm, I'm quite worried that all of our pipes are just going to collapse and, yeah, everything will fail. And the last thing, in section five, I think I agreed with most things, but the one I really wanted to say was the southern landfill. I think increase the fees. I try to live a zero waste lifestyle, I absolutely fail at that, but I think putting up the prices of dumping, like hopefully it won't make people dump rubbish, but I think it will hopefully get people thinking about waste and that it doesn't, like when you throw something away, out, there is no out, like, yeah. Do you have a question, Laurie?
Yes, Laurie does have a question.
Oh, yes. That's pretty much all I wanted to say, so hit me with your questions.
Okay, so Laurie.
Thank you, Pail. I didn't mean to interrupt your lovely, genuine submission to us today. I can tell we all really responded to your personal experiences. I won't deny I wanted to cry when you were talking about swimming in our beautiful harbour and that you swimmers were letting each other know. But thank you for telling that story to us, it makes it meaningful. My question to you is, thank you for bringing your thoughts around the increase of the landfill fees. Because yes, that is the purpose, to try and deter people from just throwing things out as first option. But one of the reasons why we have done that is also so that we can support diversion projects through those, those monies. You know, through those raised funds, but that was forgotten to put into the plan.
Councillor Foo, just reminding you, there's meant to be questions.
All right, would you support that more if you knew that the fees increase was going toward diversion projects as well?
Well, my thoughts on like the diversion things, I personally, when, like, I think I heard on RNZ this morning, someone was like, yes, I'm a proud recycler. And I was thinking, what do you think happens with recycling? It's still a linear process. You can only recycle, some things are infinitely recyclable, but it still has an energy cost, right? So to me, like a lot of the diversion things, I'm like, this still seems a bit weird to me.
Okay, sadly, we've run out of time, but thank you, Pail, for your, your contribution today. It's been really well appreciated. Now, I'm wondering if we have Robert in the room. Robert Wright?
Hey, yeah.
Welcome, Robert. You might want to turn your video on. We can hear you, though.
Okay, yeah.
And again, you have, like everyone else, you have five minutes and I'll let you know when roughly a minute's up. And if you want to allow time for questions, that has to fit into the five minutes.
Yeah, no worries. Hopefully it won't take five minutes. And basically, I just want to say thanks for this opportunity. I've been a resident here for 24 years. I love Wellington. And but looking at the plans that are in place, with now we've got the hindsight of what's happening with the world, we're possibly going into a massive recession, there's huge unemployment. Should we be revisiting everything with that as a perspective? For example, the 10-year plan, I mean, there's huge increases in rates as part of the 10-year plan. And if we look forward 10 years and add in the unemployment and people having to take huge pay cuts, should we take that into consideration and revisit the 10-year plan? And I've asked for the one-year plan to be rejected. There was not a zero increase or even a decrease. I don't see why we shouldn't be considering decreasing spending or decreasing rates and looking at other methods of obtaining money, whatever they might be. And with that in mind, in regards to the current climate, would it be more prudent to consider only critical spending such as infrastructure? Yeah, I agree with the harbour. Let's get it clean. Let's get all the wastewater managed properly. So I'd like the council to be considering only critical spending and not extravagance or spending because we want something. Let's consider that these are uncertain times and we should stop even for a year. If we stopped doing all additional spending, only did critical spending, then we will be in a better position as Wellingtonians to then go, oh, yeah, it wasn't so bad or my goodness, thank goodness, we stopped and didn't do all this because we're all in such strife.
So you do have someone wanting to ask a question, Robert. I don't know if you want to carry on or allow a bit of time for that.
Another couple of things, yeah. In regards to spending on roads, given that we've now got a lot more people that can work from home and businesses are considering that as an option, perhaps roads, road usage will be reduced. So should we be stopping any such infrastructure spending on upgrading and adding roads when in fact we might see a 50% reduction in the use of roads, which might be the alleviation of the congestion so that we don't have to spend all that money? On a few other things, yeah, empty housing stock, completely agree with the comments, some great comments from people that presented before. And that's me. I just want to bring out, I know it's not as good as some of the other presentations. Everyone's really positive, but my brain's going, wow, we're in a really unusual situation. We've never been here. Let's consider it.
Thank you. I think unfortunately we have run out of time for questions, but I know that you've, we can probably contact you if you want to dig some of the, it was councillor Young that wanted to ask you a question. So maybe you can text her afterwards or contact her through the, or she can contact you. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, thank you. Moving on, we've got Christine. Yes, hi Christine.
Hello.
You have five minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Yep. Hey, thank you very much. I'm not used to the Zoom thing very well, so just be with me. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to make the oral submissions. This is a personal submission from just from myself. I'm not with any organisations or anything like that. My biggest concern is around the water and the spend in the water space. I have lived in Wellington since, for about 18 years. So in 2004, I was here when the wonderful Capacity came on board and to fix all our water problems and manage everything correctly. We are now, how many years later, and it is still not in a good state. And Capacity said that they made all this wonderful money and saved everyone heaps of money, but in the end of the day, we are now paying. So just, that's one point. My second point is just around the fact that, was it three years ago? My house got revalued and it went from 320 to 540, which is fantastic, but my rates went up by $100 a quarter. So I've been told that that money wasn't good for anything. I'm just curious as why and what they did with all the money they got from everyone when they revalued houses. I, just listening to some of the earlier presentations, I have double glazed my house. I have insulated under my floor and in my walls. I put solar panels on my roof. I do my own home baking. I make muesli and cereal to reduce my waste that goes to landfill. I have a worm farm that I then put in my garden where I'm growing my own vegetables. So I think I'm doing my bit for Wellington and I love Wellington, but what's going on with the waters in Wellington is just embarrassing. That's really it. I like Newlands. It's a wonderful place. Love the park that's going to come. Well overdue. But any questions?
Thank you. And you've left quite a bit of time. So are there any questions? So we've got councillor Rush.
Thanks, Christine. Just on the water on portfolio lead, so I just want to reassure you, message taken on board. Budget has been upped in the annual budget and we will be seeing long-term changes. Well, I was very interested in your efforts, your personal efforts to insulate and make your own property warm, dry and, you know, climate friendly, I suppose. We're getting a lot of representations from people suggesting that that's something that the Wellington City Council should be funding from ratepayers. What would you say to that?
As far as collecting green waste, yes, I do agree that that should be a service that council provides. But as far as the rest, I don't think we should be spending money helping homeowners insulate and double-glaze their own houses. It's a personal responsibility.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a question from councillor Day.
Thanks for sharing with us today, Christine. I think you've shared some interesting insights with personal perspective. I guess just following on from councillor Rush's question, just around the home energy audits, what you're thinking is around for, obviously, you know, for many of us, it's something we can afford to do and we know what we can do. But obviously, not everybody is in that situation. And I guess just wondering how you think those people need to be supportive to be able to access, you know, some of the same facilities that many of us sort of find a little bit easier to find.
Well, there are sustainable organisations out there who are aiming at this and they are getting grants from bigger industries to pay for some of those audits and bits and pieces. I don't think that's something that council should pay for.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions for Christine? No, it looks like that's been made quite clear. Thank you for coming and submitting to us, Christine. It's good to hear a diversity of views. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Right, we have Forest and Bird Wellington and we have Mike Britton, Ken Yu and Peter. How are we going with?
We're already in the meeting, but Forest and Bird Youth are in the meeting. Josh, present.
Kia ora all. Can you hear me fine?
We can.
Excellent. Yes, my name is Josh Finnegan. Thanks for giving me this opportunity, councillors, deputy mayor and mayor for speaking today. As mentioned, I'm representing Forest and Bird Youth Wellington. Recently, we sent a letter to all the Greater Regional Council councillors in the Wellington region, essentially outlining why nature should be at the heart of the COVID pandemic economic recovery in response. But the reason why we're speaking here today and the submission is obviously many of the principles that we outline in this letter do apply to the annual plan and the long-term plan of Wellington. So as it says in the letter, as youth, we don't want to inherit a planet that has been ravaged by our previous business as usual behaviour. And I think that point very much does apply to not just youth, which we can speak to from that perspective. But many of the other submissions made here today do outline that this is a concern felt by many citizens of different ages. So I think that is very much something we want to highlight. In the letter, we do outline a list of different opportunities that we have to not only put nature and conservation at the heart of this economic recovery and planning process going forward, but also to simulate this connection between wellbeing, conservation and the involvement of citizens in the nature of Wellington. So I think the point that we're trying to make here is that really there is a duty here of councillors and those that have a governance role in Wellington to take young people on this journey as well as future generations and change our planetary directory and build a more prosperous society for both people and nature. Local authorities do play a very key role in ensuring that our transitions to a more sustainable way of life. And obviously, we do understand that many submissions would have already been made to the central governments in terms of these sort of plans that we want to make around water, roading, that sort of stuff. But I think the lens we very much take in the letter, which we can share with you again in future, but it's about a very much more high-level and long-term view, which I think is very much applicable, not just for this annual plan, but for many going forward. And as, again, many submissions are made here today, things such as the climate crisis are very much not a one-and-done plan. They need to be saying that needs to be worked into all plans going forward because these are very long-term issues. And just the other key points that we outlined in the letter is the need to uphold Tijiruia tangi. Because I think if we are to take young people on this journey, we need to take all people on this journey. And it's essentially crucial at a local level where you are making these decisions on the finua to really bring everyone on this journey. So I think coming at it from that perspective is just really crucial to ensuring that this economic recovery is just and upholds everyone's values. Yeah, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Josh. And councillor Penet does have a question.
Kia ora, Josh. Thank you so much for that submission. Loved the point about nature being at the heart of decision-making in COVID-19. So I presume that you would support Tifutua, which was our attempt to sort of at least put environment at the heart of the COVID-19 recovery. Just modest, though, at this stage.
Yes, absolutely. I think, yeah, as we say, we understand you have already taken steps in this direction. But I think, yeah, our point is that it does need to be much more fire-reaching into every aspect of governance planning, whether that's, yeah, roads, conservation spaces or urban planning. So, yeah, we definitely agree with that initiative, but yeah, our view is that it needs to go much further than that.
And I presume you would want us to take a strong stance on cycling, which is also good for nature.
Yes, absolutely. That's, yeah, one of the submissions outlined in our letter is, yeah, reducing or minimising investments in roads and, yeah, supporting other methods of transport. Yeah. And again, that goes to bringing everyone on this journey.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have a question from councillor Neil.
Kia ora, Josh. Thank you for your submission and the forest and bird advocacy over this time period as well. My question is around, if you had a pot of money, say 100K, where would you invest that? If you could pick one area, where would you see the priority being for the annual plan?
That's a challenging question because I guess it is, yeah, from my personal perspective, I do think conservation work is outlined in the national budget this year is a very important point. So that's going around both forest and water. And say, for example, the submission before on cleaning up things such as the harbour, ensuring our waterways are safe to swim in. I think, yeah, those are very fundamental things that, there are many other parts that are necessary but not sufficient. But I think that is a fundamental first step.
Thank you, Josh. And we actually have a question from councillor Rush. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Josh, thanks for that. Look, I am championing the development of green infrastructure to support our built water environment. It's very exciting. But I, to be quite frank, I hear a lot of people saying we should be putting people and businesses first in this recovery. And obviously, integrating that in with our concerns with the environment. What would you say to those people?
I'd say absolutely, we do need to bring people and businesses on this journey. And I think that's, again, something that's outlined in this letter is it's not a one or the other conservation versus economic recovery. There are very many things that can be done to, yeah, bring businesses on this journey with us towards, yeah, economic and conservation recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. I don't see anyone else with questions. So that's been very interesting. And I think everyone's had a good chance to ask your questions and have you give responses. It's been very useful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, deputy.
So I'm just wondering if we have Forest and Bird Wellington in the room now. We, I see David's here, but that's the next submitter. Just wondering.
Not present in the meeting yet, so if you would like to go to David next.
Okay, David and Esther and Duncan, are you ready for your, to give your submission a little bit early? Because we are, the people we're expecting to be here are not. So is that okay?
Is Duncan ready? We need Duncan.
Yeah, I think we can still kick off and when Duncan comes online, we can.
No, I think we should get him online.
Okay, we can wait a little bit. I can actually see Joshua here. Joshua, are you coming with John? And is he here? I'm wondering if we could move to you.
Okay.
Does that suit you or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we'll do that and then we'll see if we can catch up with ourselves a little bit. So you have 10 minutes because you're representing the Chamber of Commerce. We look forward to hearing what you've got to say. I'll let you know a minute before your time's up. And if you do want to leave time for questions, that has to be accommodated within the 10 minutes. So just some guidelines there. And thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, Sarah, Kia ora. Councillors and council officers, actually, I know it might surprise you, but I'm actually not going to make this submission. Joshua is actually going to make the submission on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and I'm going to sit on his right hand and support him doing it. So over to Joshua.
Thank you, John. Kia ora tato. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the annual plan proposal on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. John said my name is Josh Tan. I'm the research policy and advocacy advisor at the Chamber of Commerce. But first and foremost, I'm actually a passionate Wellingtonian. I actually asked John if I could do this whole submission on behalf of the chamber. And that's because I have a vested interest in the wellbeing of my city. Now, I'm too young to remember the dull grey Wellington of the 1980s, but I grew up here in the 1990s and early 2000s. And to be quite frank, it's hard to see much change since then. I'm hoping that you, our councillors, have an ambitious vision, not for the next year or the next 10 years, but actually, in fact, for the next 40 to 50 years. That's certainly the mindset that I think that we need going forward. And I think we actually need to start now. I want to be brief, so I trust that you've all read our paper in detail. But before I get into it, I do also want to acknowledge council officers, all those hard-working staff that work diligently on the annual plan itself and who also continue to keep council open and consulting over lockdown. It's fantastic and it's much appreciated. So thank you. The Wellington Chamber of Commerce has been part of the city for 164 years. Currently, we have around 1,300 members that call Wellington home and that is part of the 3,600 members we have region-wide. It's critical to note also that Wellington's businesses contribute significantly to the city and the region's rates intake. I think the figure is around 45% for the city and 33% for the greater region. The chamber acknowledges the council's efforts to date in minimising the rates increase for this year. However, our organisation must also point out that, given the current economic situation and with many businesses already struggling, any increase in the general rates will hit business where it matters most and that is the cash flow. Following the news from AMP this morning, we would also urge the council to ensure that rates increases is at an absolute minimum on the commercial rate pay. We've been saying for years that the commercial rate payers in the city have been overrated. And if commercial property demand is to drop further, council will not be able to access the honeypot as it is in the future. Now, regarding the proposals included in the annual plan consultation, the chamber holds the following views. We disagree with the overall approach of the annual plan and believe that the council needs to fundamentally rethink some of their business as usual methods. We disagree with the overall approach of the annual plan and believe that the council needs to fundamentally rethink some of their business as usual methods. We support the minimum 2.3% increase. However, we also support the council making large-scale investments necessary to take the city forward. We support the tipitor build-back initiative. We agree withholding the majority of fees and charges at the current levels. And finally, we also agree with increasing the southern landfill fees to help fund pluto pays and waste reduction initiatives. Just regarding the tipitor proposal, I'm actually quite looking forward to what comes out of the Resource Recovery Centre business case. Last year, I was speaking to councillor Foon and councillor Panet regarding possible, you know, international collaboration with another organisation that we front. So we're very much looking forward to that as well as the investment in the art sector, which is incredibly important. In preparing our submission, we surveyed our members and found that there was a split regarding rates increases. So 23% supported the 5.1% increase, 36% supported the 2.3% option, and 31% rejected both options. But what was made clear to me was the outright support for significant investment in our water, our transport, our housing and our civic communities regardless of the rates increase. And that's something that we'll talk to further. Though businesses are appreciative of the current recovery initiatives, it's clear to us that many businesses are struggling. They don't think council is doing enough to support them, and they don't believe that council sympathises with the current situation. I know this information came out of our latest business confidence survey, which closed two weeks ago. We urge the council to maintain their financial discipline when it comes to the operational expenses. In the current situation, businesses are having to be prudent, cut costs, find savings in areas. And we would expect council to do the same. So while this consultation is about the annual plan, we wanted to focus on some of the longer-term ambitions of the city and consider the goals we want to achieve. Any short-term planning here on out needs to be in the post-COVID long-term vision of the city. As such, we have identified six key challenges where the city council needs to focus if it is to build back better. The first challenge is economic recovery post-COVID. So the council can help businesses by investing in crucial infrastructure and maintaining their financial discipline. Any activities must show that they stimulate the local economy, enhance productivity and keep businesses going over the long term. The second challenge is water. And initial estimates put the cost at about $1 billion over 10 years. Such an investment programme is certainly out of reach for council under existing funding streams. But the chamber is open to the idea of water metering, provide a user-paid revenue stream that would also significantly improve water conservation in our city. Challenge three is our transport infrastructure and the well-known problems around our roads, our tunnels, our public transport and our cycleways. We believe that let's get Wellington moving programme passes far too much of the cost onto the local rate payers relative to other parts of the country and the deals that they have struck. We believe that council must renegotiate the current funding splits and reintroduce the idea of congestion charging. Wellington's fourth challenge is our lack of affordable housing within our city limits. This is something that I know well. The council can encourage development through regulatory support, expediting consents and better guidance through approval processes. This is an area where we actually think that we need political leadership and leaders like yourselves to champion housing to articulate why housing is essential and why it needs to proceed in certain areas. If Wellington doesn't pick up its housing game, then areas like Pordor, Wadonapa, Kapiti, the Huts, they will all reap the benefits and the rates incomes that actually go with it. Also perversely, this would exacerbate our regional emissions and traffic congestion issues as people continue to commute into the city from the wider region. All right. The civic square is our fifth challenge. It's extremely disappointing to see the heart of our city in the state that it is. But we must also remember that Civic Square wasn't actually functioning as well as it could have been pre-building closures. The chamber firmly believes that it needs to be a civic space for people to access services, stay warm, study and spend time casually. However, the library doesn't need to be rebuilt in the way that it was before. We believe that the pop-up libraries actually work really well in multiple locations on the ground floor of the city and are bringing actually a little bit more life to those areas. The ground floor also acts as a visible indicator of economic health of the city. So for council to utilise these spaces and attract foot traffic in different areas provides effective use. The final challenge now is resilience within the city and problems with insurance. Commercial building owners are facing insurance premiums doubling, tripling and quintupling in the space of a year or two. Now, the mayoral task force on insurance has gone quiet. And we urge the council to reopen those conversations, continue to work with government, businesses and residents. Because without a solution, higher premiums will severely impact the development of our city and our high-rise buildings. Now, those are the six key areas identified. I'll finish there. There's plenty more in our submission. So I'll leave it there so I can bring someone back into the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Joshua. We do have two questions from councillor Fitzsimons and councillor Foon. So if you keep them reasonably succinct, I think we'll get them both.
Thanks, Joshua. I just wanted to ask a question. You said that I totally agree affordable housing is one of our major challenges. And the solution you sort of talked about was the consenting process. But would you agree that it goes quite a lot deeper than that? And what else do you think the council could be doing to encourage more affordable housing in Wellington?
Look, one of the challenges, I think, here is that we have to free up the land which is currently for single-storey use in the city. I mean, if we look down Cambridge Terrace and we have, and I have to be careful here because I'll probably get offside with all the car yards down there. But we have a number of single-story buildings and businesses around the city. And what we need to do is we need to incentivise the owners of those businesses and all the land who actually convert that land into housing, in our view, and it be multi-story housing. So there has to be mechanisms that we can use the local government levy and even by working with central government who convert those locations into multi-story or multiple areas where we can actually raise accommodation. And equally, I think we need to look at further conversions of office building into accommodation and also facilitate that conversation. I think one of the other things that I'd say as well is we really do need councillors to be champions of this. Because sometimes it's not what the neighbours of those sites want to hear. And look, we just have to be brave, I think, and recognise that, you know, if we doubled or tripled the amount of people that lived in our city, both from a vibrance, economic vibrance and residential vibrance, this city would be a completely different place.
Okay, I'm really sorry, but we have run out of time for the second question. But that was a very good presentation, very full. And thank you again, John and Joshua, for coming to present to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll be moving now to David and Esther and Duncan. And they have come from the Wellington Chinese Garden Committee. And you have 10 minutes to tell us what you'd like us to hear.
Well, thank you, Sarah, and good morning to everybody. Presenting a garden as a gift to the people and city of Wellington has long been a vision of the Chinese community here. Some 25 years ago, the main Chinese community organisations came together to form a working party with the aim of realising this dream. From as early as the mid 1800s, Chinese people have settled in Wellington. We have been part of the history and development of this city. We are very much proud Wellingtonians. Over the years, we joined the discussions on the waterfront, indeed from the days of the waterfront leadership group. The community, together with the city council, looked at and considered many sites, including the often suggested Botanic Garden. But they proved unsuitable or not available to us. It was important that the garden be sited somewhere in the city so that it was accessible and able to be enjoyed by all. It is a gift and we like our gifts to be used, really. Originally, a garden was to be included on Waichangi Park, but this too became impossible. So the garden became part of the redevelopment of Frank Kit's Park. Placed between two big open spaces of flat lawn and bridging the two levels of lawn, the topography of the land suits very well the style of a Chinese garden. It lends interest, variety and a space for contemplation. This garden has been designed in Wellington for Wellington. Resource consent for this project has been upheld by the High Court and there are no more legal difficulties to overcome. The project has come through many difficulties and times. We look to the city council to continue working with us in making this gift for our city. The Wellington City waterfront is much celebrated as a people place and it has won many awards and has been described as a string of pearls of interesting spaces. And this garden is indeed another jewel in it. And I think we also have a video of a walkthrough part of the garden, which you may view. It is available from the council democratic services or if the councillors would like, we would be open to having a meeting to discuss more of the garden with you. And now it's Duncan's turn. Hello Duncan.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a great pleasure to be able to speak to you about this project, a long-term project, as Esther has said. I'll pick up very briefly on just a number of points that Esther has. Brief for the design of the garden called for a unique contemporary Chinese garden that embodied something of the history of the Chinese communities of Wellington. And I think that's the excitement of the project. It is a unique design. It's site-specific. It's special to Wellington. It's unlike any other Chinese garden that has been built overseas out of China. And it's very contemporary because it's a very open garden. It invites people into it. In fact, the interest of it is that you don't visit the Chinese garden as it will be on that site, but you go through it. You walk through it from city to sea in a way that it connects physically the city to the sea. But it also connects us to the past and the present and the future of Wellington as a city of migrants and built by waves of immigration. And so it's a lovely project. It's a long, a project that's long been in the park. David, I think I've said all I want to say.
Well, thank you Duncan. Thank you. Kia ora, madam chair, councillors, your worship. I'm actually a bit of a latecomer to the garden association. I've only been a member since, I think it was November of last year and not the 25 years of Esther and quite a few years of Duncan. But, you know, I see it as, I mean, seven, seven years ago, I had no idea of the garden. And initially, I had no interest in the garden until I had actually a better understanding of the context. And that context was covered by Auntie Esther. And the garden is more than just a garden. It's actually storytelling. And it tells my story, my family's 100-year story. And it actually tells the story of all New Zealanders. And it's all about a matter of context, whether it's 500 years, 100 years, which is in my family's case, or just 10 years. And it's, for us, it's a coming of age. It is for us to actually add a chapter or verse in the New Zealand story. And, you know, we in Wellington have a very beautiful harbour. It's a necklace, necklace. And we are just adding another jewel to that necklace. And it's about telling others to also do the same. But back to the here and now, our funding commitment is sorted. We've overcome all the barriers and hurdles of the last two and a half years. So we're actually good to go. We are shovel-ready. I'll even bring the shovel. Let's, so let's break ground. Let's turn that through sod. And do now, but, you know, let's go for July, 1st of July, I think. So let's do this or that trademark. But yeah, let's go for it.
Thank you, everybody. That's wonderful to hear. Now, I do have some questions. I have a question from councillor Young, and I'm not sure, but one is also from councillor Foon.
Hi, hello all of you. So thank you. So I have a couple of questions because I support the idea of the Chinese garden in principle, but I don't want it on the waterfront. So I grew up when the waterfront was behind barbed wire. And, you know, it's been a big battle to have it so that it is open to everyone. So Esther, you mentioned that the Botanic Gardens, some of the sites were unsuitable or some weren't possible. Would you consider reconsidering another location? Partly because where it's going to go is of course on top of the underground car park, which is a seismic risk and has decor reinforcing. So, I mean, there's no way, I believe, it would not go ahead when the land underneath it is earthquake-prone.
Yes, thank you councillor Young. I can probably answer that question with, it's probably the same answer. If I asked the question, why, why do we not look at a new location for the convention centre? And it's because all the other options have already been explored. A site has been chosen. A consent has been granted. That is the preferred site.
Actually, the two aren't the same. The thing is, we own the land for the convention centre, whereas you're relying on us to give you the land.
Councillor Young, I'm actually going to go to councillor Foon so that we don't run out of time. Councillor Foon.
What's the holdup?
I think, I think there's, I mean, the, it was a two-and-a-half-year delay having to fight this matter through the courts. But all those barriers and hurdles are behind us now. So we're actually ready to go. We just need.
What do we have to do?
You just need to, let's turn up on-site and do that first sod turn. 1st of July, we're good to go.
We need, we really need the council behind us. To, so that we can go out to the community and say, look, the city council are with us all the way and we're ready and willing.
So is that a paper? Is it, is it an actual action does this council need to take?
So I don't, with all respect, councillor Foon, I don't think that's a question we can probably expect us to answer for us. But we know that you've asked that question and it's one that we can put to our staff. Are there any other questions? We do have just a minute left. Are there any other questions for the submitters? No, with that being the case, I thank you very much. That was very interesting and nice to hear from three different perspectives as well. So thank you, David, Duncan and Esther for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you. So that actually also brings us to the end of our meeting and the end of our submitters. So I think it's just, we are hearing from Forest and Bird Wellington. They can't come today. They go rescheduled for 17th. And I'm not entirely sure what's happened to Bernard, but perhaps, Donna, we can follow up with him and see if he's still wanting to submit. Maybe if there is time, put him in somewhere else. It's only left to me now to formally thank the submitters. That was part of our initial resolutions. So I just want to put it on the record that we are very thankful to everyone who's come today and given their time and given so many different perspectives on our annual plan and helped us understand how the community use it. And that being done, I think it already remains to ask councillor Matthews to say the closing karakia. And then I will formally just announce that the meeting is closed. Thank you councillor Matthews, and thank you everyone for your attendance. I declare the meeting.